Well, Chris J said in next seat.
Get some lights come on?
It does. You gotta hold the button and it'll flash for you.
Thank you.
I do. That's the first thing I thought.
Um, you guys that sign in, you sign in to talk. I'm talking. No, I didn't say no. Okay, I did. You're welcome to talk. Okay, sign in before you figure.
Okay, so call to order with a flag. Okay, a board of eight key committee motion to approve the minutes of November 18th to let me be more aboard the education meeting. Motion by Tara. Sarah, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stand and carry. Motion to accept the CSC, the CPSC, and the five oh form court. Motion by Tara. Sent it by Melissa. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stay and carry. Okay, so I have one agenda change. I forgot to add on here that we need an executive session in regards to how are you personnel, and there'll be no action taken. We'll have to do it after our upcoming days. So anything else that can be added?
No.
Um, we have financials, we have a general fund, expenditures, our school lunch fund, and our lunch report for September that you are able to look at in your board packets. Does anyone have any questions? Welcome officially to our new, um, business official. Do you have anything to point out to us?
Not right now.
All right. This is your first meet, right? Second, welcome. How can we thank you? Welcome. Welcome to the lodge you're here. Anybody have anything? Eric Delver is going to present the library today.
Okay, so this might be a, um, this is why I get asked for us to, from, uh, more specifically, um, I have a special schedule for the sixth, and I'm going to ask the school and the different sessions that is this year, and I do lessons across different features of life as well, and I think this is like a super class. This is why I think it's safe to, um, maybe reading this, the original plan. I'm entitled to read the script. No, at least I mean people. So this is a summary, this is, this is, of course, if you took a front here, this is like a summary of something. So just for the, you know, I don't actually do that, but I do everything. So, um, this is just a little, the person who's a double cast, and probably, and he promises everybody that this is the kind of experience. Check out about five thousand audio, liberal, books in magazines that are streaming out between, which I heard is very new. That's been consistent for the past seven years. So what I do, the audio book program, whatever that is made that we use, um, for everyone, and a lot of students who's over the world. So check it out, uh, books is great, as always, I've been, um, so we've got this, uh, books. Uh, including the, 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 this was just this past week. Just to look in also, we have a few libraries open all day, um, and it keeps coming in behind where they're, I think they're on seven, and it keeps coming out. Check out books, um, we come, the guest support, uh, I do guest support for the libraries, um, from other universities. People you have, especially when you're not there. So teachers will, um, kind of be, perhaps, if you have, um, that's the issue. Uh, we do part of the workshops, and it's, I don't know, keep my E B project, um, a lot of things I'm previous, because I went to bring, and actually, this is a new. We do those, I don't know, pretty much in March or April. Um, I don't think this is kind of, um, getting a call from somebody. All curriculum six grade speakers participate. They read with parent or students, or fellow students, if they're kind of in, that novel and square and square two. If this is, it's, we, we, in other places, because, uh, they do, gather and deal, and then, um, end of March, and first, and all the good acts. You know, this would be a different way for the, one time, and then for, and if you speak, I do, so we decided to complement that. It's good, I just appreciate from the kids' view, pretty good at home. So I have this sort of speed, three kids, that's, that's a great, um, but we share this, because they're in books, and teachers, uh, extra. Um, modern, just reading, uh, books that are comfortable, but it kind of cut back, the PPSA kind of took up the slack a little. PPSA, AJ last week, this quarter, the last couple of years, has been the highest, and the first, and the best, and books, and video, um, and people, it's going to, it's something to do. So definitely, I just made an, and everyone choose.
Very nice, too. Um, the board might be interested. If you're ever interested in coming in, often classes will ask for someone just to come in and read a story during the classes. Um, as a guest reader during this time. So if that's something that would interest you, just let myself or Eric know. We could certainly sign you up in one of the classes and read a book.
And if you're, if you're interested in really, really challenging, visit, um, the books. Okay, so this cuts it on, uh, the place section, the pre-gradual, um, this is just, I figured that the pre-gradual, the first word is good, uh, it helps them. Remember parts of the story, part of the story, and I clearly discovered sets, um, so many parts, and I just looked at some of the last. Uh, we would have thought, and characters, and the setting, and the books we printed, and then, we not, and I, and I just, and I, and I. And I find it makes up, like, I said, this is another, we have four different types of activities in this class, and we have reading. I just felt I wanted, I want to do correct activities, to be, uh, the last issue, but I, I quoted, I saw, and this is the part that goes with the book. So I think that, you know, the rest of the classes, I think, um, okay, I probably, skipping around, but, um, this, the, 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 um, I, I definitely want to appreciate this year. The thing where I spoke last time, I just, I'm, I was, the student, um, that everything, whatever that words. I do, the curriculum, I don't know if you know, the, um, the curriculum policy for the student, uh, I, I, this is also, uh, I, I, I produce it for a lot of students, and to less than times. So my curriculum is, that is, hopefully, I go into, I do study, and secondly, go through the sixth grade, and then what happened to it, and probably, the, and two and a half, or this, I can cover. And maybe cover and turn out as well as I can cover. Um, we need this really, actually, we need that to get a certain quality. This is not the way to pass students. And this is never the same as this. Now, this is the I it's one of the things I appreciate is the original. Um, but this program here, they'll learn about the creative back and how the frog draw in the current set of the book from the ground culture, the digital technology, the change between the and the yellow frog, you know, that one thing. And the change in law, and there's also that in the same. So maybe that itself, this is my they learned about using some cards or some kind of have bits and acts. But then after the year off, I haven't just worked on doing themselves. So this program is a good way to come up, try to do that. That's why I was really working these a lot of time, which is one to get to my own system. But I just yeah, I appreciate that, that this is that is that. And first, if you want to, it's hard, I said it to you in the first time, we did that. It was very much so important. Um, and again, this is another from um, no, I have to say that. This one, that's what I do. So basically, when they get here, they create a picture, they maybe test out the salt in the same one that we met today. And then they do a pretty so in a sound and then they do the function, which is actually does the path culture, which is where you're at more clearly than this is in a way that she's finishing whatever, but the way that she's another design and this is it. So they do that themselves, you know, we we did use sound, they were like this. So it's kind of random, like you did this, you know, like sound generally. Okay, I mean, that's what we like. Yeah, okay, I'm so sorry. Anyway, these are I'm comfortable with that as well. These are I'm making gifts that is giving me these report orders, we use a program called Washington, so they love this. They love this because they continue the simple to do, but they're closer to their general, their profile, usually looking up on the app. I feel this almost giving us a negative. Basically, if you put things as a picture, when you're like, I'm a wild and weird, this is people that have been years. So this is this is this is. But yeah, this is a little bit down, I do it from watching you, like a couple of them that we got. So anyway, these are I'm maybe just like, we're not going to want this one. Um, this is a glass, you see, I've got a model of a couple of classes. And that's just that. Okay, so as I said, I start secondary to the primary. They really need to practice the practice of you and practice their products are turning into a great combination of computer skill, just learning that they can work these out. So we expect that have highlight and have positive things. So they are actually using those cards, we understand, and using that in secondary. And they're really good at practicing, detecting skills. Like a lot of the time, I'm just playing, I'm having shit, don't you want some of your gear? And I started using, I started the program using kindergarten. I I feel like if we need more time, um, there's always going to be these type of stuff that's really basic, but nice, real, and people's space. So they're really comfortable with the library. And so I started really early on that. And it's a strategy job out of thirty years, three spots, then six places you pipe on, which is a different kind of experience for you. It's also very lively, you can do stuff like that. Um, secondary is that we use more pictures, because it's hard to change pictures, and also secondary. Okay, so now just I also work a lot on the G notes, new apps, um, slides, sheets, uh, docs, and basic for users. But this is stuff that's, you know, they're also doing some of this in classroom, but I feel that really good. So some of these are just websites that fit, you know, using people's sites. You know, just going to take a lot of certain keywords. Um, and others, if you get your eyes, if you put on, you have to set up pages. I mean, you know, it's complex things, uh, you know, these ones are basically musical sites and then with the bar, um, and so, you know. So they make websites, and those are the actual digital websites that we're addressing. They really exist. Um, I also really want to show you this, and also the spreadsheet thing, which I think they, you know, it's kind of it's it's detailed, but I think it's a little bit of a project. And obviously, it's a pretty long tree of a lot of stuff, you know, like I don't know how much, I don't know how much spreadsheet stuff, I mean, I'm so much. But I actually use law, to a specific, to spreadsheets, you know, I use filters, have to do um also have to create charts. So they're creating this part chart, they're starting to imagine a smooth story that they have, um, facility of sale, they're sort of lead that they're one of the best, they're able to do, the super sale, they're fast on Friday. So they use this in front of charting, so it's a different type of charting for me. Um, this is mobile, but I think it's working in the end. How does sales series and different aspects of this match with these? So, spreadsheets. Um, the other thing I appreciate certainly is, I do need to do that for research, also the kids start to do this stuff, like the six grade, uh, they just have a piece of this sort of skill, they find the individual articles. Um, this is something I'm not sure, but maybe should just be realized in the country. But they find articles, they summarize the articles using their own words, and then they send them. So we want to start showing lots of pictures, and this is sort of the objects, the slideshows that I'm usually controlled, the feedbacks, um, I really can give them animal stuff. Um, so we give a whole month of visual citizenship, especially at this point, I think, really important. These are courses, they're going to be some data, which I left in the hall. And we've got a playlist, we've got our area, we've got some of our, um, the cyber dominated social media, the data safety, you know, do, uh, the shows, we do the writing, writing out answers and sentences, and we have a lot of discussions and knowledge happening. So we usually have a really good topic. Um, this is a big shift, it is social media, it's a four to six grade, that's nice. Um, the project, and the social media, so I'm just watching it sort of escalate and and access, but we don't consider it. So we send a lot of time on visual citizenship. Um, this is something we started this year, definitely with the smart screen, I mean, we got three, we prepared, uh, I started using the weather, and we use a printer on our computer pad. And we, this is a picture of a six grade designer car. And they can support the logic of the company, the four gradations, and have used to do that, but we don't actually press that many, and it's like, I don't like changing this person to do. So we we can actually, everyone is going to, you just did, you know, a real career in your life. Just the real of the car day, and then over the picture, have to visualize it, and the way it was better, just nothing to the car, and then when it comes, they have a choice to afford the color elements, which should have been about the road, these are two levels to produce car. Um, so I'm going to say that I'm going to fall to the end here, and I think that they teach it, you know, that that we decide to see it. But it's also kind of things to add to something else, we also have to be thinking of this. So it's really good, and I spoke a ton about one of my students, I'm just thinking about some of them, but I shouldn't. Um, do you think this thing, the card, was you made, see, made her books at some point, you know, for the signs? And then I add the books to the collection, and her water comes up, and the kids can check it out. There are really hard work, you know, because you're not checking, that's just personally something that exists in your body. So I like to present collection, I like to present a bookstore, we do that six years to last year, in the books we have. We also make books, ebooks, um, which are purely about which people are willing to write in the time, so we also make these book creators. These are just like doing activities right now, where I'm also kind of like, I still don't know, it's still where, it's still on the circulation. This is me teaching, um, beyond that, I think I've got some regular questions I could do, which are teaching all of that, basically, stuff we do to give them, I consider work for us. This is just that, this is those types of people, I'm sure. So basically, I don't know, we don't have that, basically, that we could forward for access, which can easily handle, like, the monastery, show them how to access certain databases, which would work for it, you know, I've got this, it's a sign that we have a good strategy for that. She wanted to show them how to do um a citation analogy in the article. So I thought that, I feel that the analogies. I work with the city, this is the phone, and I arrange new video, I dress upon this. I need to do student exam class for one hundred and one percent, five them, material that you use in the research paper, and if they don't have the topic, they have them in a research topic in a different paper. And I mean, I mean, I mean, for some. Uh, anyway, I think it's just a quick, I do a lot of stuff that doesn't put into the library, I'm in charge of the pre master schedule. I clearly under the master schedule, end of summer, and wrapping the, um, Emma's monster for all of the small blocks there. Probably the course, the cryptic, the core card, helping teachers set up great books, and that's all right, my pre master schedule. Um, all of the online and the business services that we use, that is free, I brought here and implemented, and then every year, I'm responsible for the ministry. I'm sure if you have a child, this will be I excel, and Starlee and Sarah, who's been in the system, I brought up, and then there's a new one that comes on board, I'm the one who sets it up, the board of last year's, and then every time you have an issue, or if you complete something, or if you have, I'm the one that sort of, and that includes all the high school programs, we need one way to be the LA program, I'm the one who set that up. Um, and then text support, there's something that I want to add, which are probably unnecessary, so text support, that's something I'm going to be, I think, something, so that gets us something that's just on the ground. Um, any questions, isn't that that? Yes?
And we, uh, first of all, thank you so much.
I'm sorry, I know. Yes, thank you. All right, appreciate that, really. I'm very lucky, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. I saw that you, you enjoy life by, I think, a little, and I'm going to, I would call that being, and he's super happy that I'm here. But some of the, they only have to let us have to, yeah, that they're giving back, but they're giving this to me. Or has it truly happened in most other work, but even more other work? Other work is a little bit, but you know, I'm not going to, yes, enough, that's true, that's definitely true. And I wonder about, I'm working with a lot of students, I mean, I have come to this system I have, she's studying, so she's been able to focus on studying. Um, so I think in the past, uh, her work, I'm studying for that, so personally, the work that, you know, it's a little bit, I'm not going to say that this is where that hour, put it out, and probably hit. Um, so my brother, they're feedbacking students and students, they're putting in one, and I do one material for them, yeah. I totally agree with you that it's something that, I know that, um, you know, I need to think about it in a school year. Um, again, predominantly, I definitely don't start to that, I'm a guy. Um, I do have, you know, that's conversation that we, um, had, I do go over, you know, Lucy, that's a person that I'm not going to answer that. A lot of times, you know, but, you know, I really, I think, so, both, I do, so I don't have to, so I really, and I do say to myself, oh, you know, I need to put more time, I just do that for this, and all this shit, so. Books still get checked out, I mean, that only got five thousand in three high school, but we're talking about almost four thousand, it's not going to be a thousand. So it's like a couple of years, you know, it's like, what are you doing? I have, I think, a spreadsheet, oh, but, yeah.
Well, I'm going to take my dad, you know, I'm on the same, uh, the technology, not the same, but the technology that they use there, that we make, you know, you want to go on top of this, and they're not going to give you anything. So, uh, I'm telling you, so I have a child, it's, 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 I want to, I want to, I can ask that, and you, um.
I'll be honest with you, the other one, that's a little shift, you know, the thing that you have to ask them is, you know, they need the book, and the other one. So the one that texted, you know, how to teach this, is actually, yes, I hope they are, but I said, I was looking for, we have a program to study on. We have this program, we do it right, which is extensive, for people, especially in this department, and we, uh, teacher, we, we, I don't know, we know that, which are both, we have done, we've done it, and the classroom, yeah. Anything that's on the school, I mean, the students, that is, well, I have to do, open the, right, especially, you know, that two part of yours, you know, it's a party work, look at some article, one, and it's full of sense, if it's a Google app, it has the word, so I think they're using that a lot, and I'm definitely surprised with that, you know, and every single one of them has to make sure it's nice, because, you know, every single one of them has to be, you know, they're listening to what I say. And, you know, they see, basically, what kind of, you know, but the other thing is, and they're expensive, but they're completely part of our, you know, I think this year, I was scared to just go on to ice, we don't have the glass, and we have coffee. Now, I'll appreciate that, I'll get it to the client, yes. The other one was, you know, our product, which is, in cases, we open up, we have to include, there's a whole block, it's contained, there's a few hundred dollars, and then we pay, but checking it out. So, you know, I used to have, you know, as I said, but one, we are going to put up some pop, and I just said, whatever, I just want it to work. Because I now I think, I should, I think, I think, because I was coming later, I just like, oh, so, and I started to, but then we checked it out, so there's a lot of, we just need to have it checked out. So I think one of the things that I love about high school, that is, it gives me, out of that, well, hundreds of years back, after high school, I should probably, because a lot of people say that, they were working on it, but it's, for the system, and I got it done, to do, but, you know, I wasn't that happy, I'm not going to share that, so I'm spending that money, you know, to check that for. So basically, I think it would be a good idea to have two hundred, three hundred, also the technology, but that's also not going to be, because the last idea is to teach the shares of product knowledge, and this is so good, please be comfortable, if you do this, so, so it can still, you know, if somebody needed, I studied this, because they're all kind of, you know, now, one of the most curriculum, and you know, more of, because everyone's, you're second to third, so the thing is, a lot of it's like, yeah, well, it works a bit, and if they're not going to laugh, it gets hard to remember, but it's like, they're so popular, I, that's my one question. Um, but if you have to, you have to, you have to, to be allowed, to be, to be, I want to, I want to.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
I'm so sorry.
Great job, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bell. Um, motion to accept the two thousand twenty five legislative budget priority resolution, I'm not going to read it, but the, um, there are highlighted that the four, um, legislative priorities are, school aid, including foundation aid, graduation requirements, workforce development, and zero emission, that's it. Can I, did you want to expand on that, or?
Um, I I did put in your information what each of those, that kind of gave a brief summary, um, of those, but I I find each and every one of these are important, it's there for our school, and we do this as a health support, as a for bosses, um, and the thought of, we just think, and members.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Motion by Tom. Any questions? Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same, carries. Motion to appoint Amanda Torino as guidance secretary, level one, for the G C I T contract effective December fourth, two thousand twenty six.
Motion.
Motion by Tom, second by Tara, any discussion?
I'll just let you know, Amanda had been a sub for us, um, for a little while, um, she was someone known, and that, you know, she's been, she's been, she's been, she's been top, um, candidate.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Same, carries. Motion to appoint Julie Bock of volunteer Nordic coach for the two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five school year.
Motion.
Motion by Tom, second by Tara, any discussion?
Just Julie used to be our coach, so she's someone that's known.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Same, carries. Motion to appoint Cindy Homer, Mary Peepers, Abby Knoll, at election poll, working for the January sixteenth, two thousand twenty five special election at the current rate of pay.
Motion.
Motion by Tom, second by Tara, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Same, carries. Motion to approve the resignation of Tamia Zehar, teaching assistant at factory, December eighth, two thousand twenty four. Motion by Tara, second by Ellen, any discussion?
Tom, you might have to, gee, see, I'm going to, oh, wow.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Same, carries. So we're going to recognize that the Nervra, George Education, with a friend, Eric, the half, or the coffee?
The coffee.
Okay. As a volunteer coach for the girls' varsity basketball team for the two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five school year. Um, motion to appoint Kate Sarah Jones as coach for the five, six grade girls' basketball program, as per G S C S T A contract for the two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five school year.
Motion.
Motion by Tom, second by Tara, any discussion? He takes the.
No, that is true, that is true. The next one is true.
I said, appoint, uh, sorry, I'm not, I'm not, okay. I don't know the last, okay, all right. Um, okay, um, discussion. So I guess I have a question, we've disappointed several volunteer coaches and, um, Nervra appointments and coaches, volunteer coaches, but I'm assuming that these, all these coaches have been kind of, we've done our expectations, uh, support relationship, and, um, how we know?
I I can ask Candace about the Nervra first, and I'll be on the side, no.
Okay.
Talk to her on that, but I will definitely ask her.
I think that's important, that's one of our goals this, um, year, uh, that everybody's going to see, to talk.
I I agree with you, Rachel, and I also think that, uh, it's true to go into the season, and maybe in the middle of season, though.
Okay, uh, yeah.
Just because you brought that up, I think it's a great time. Um, I just wanted to let the board know, I had a, um, email sent to me from a spectator who, um, sent an email last year from a game that she was not pleased with what she saw sportmanship wise, um, and she sent one and said that this season she saw in basketball, um, the complete opposite. Um, she saw a game where we were getting beat by quite a bit, um, we're playing a much larger school, um, and the coach was taking the opportunity as a teaching moment and asking the, um, gentlemen, you know, what did we just do wrong, what can we do better? And both the coach and the team just seemed very open and very good at that. So I just want to put it out there that, you know, we often get the, um, complaints, it was nice to get something come forward and say, you know what, I really saw something out of it, so.
And with our group.
That was the answer, yeah.
Right?
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Same, carries. Motion to appoint Jake Sarah Jones as a volunteer coach for the fifth, sixth grade girls' basketball program in the two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty five school year. Uh, motion by Tara, second by Sarah, any discussion?
We should be putting forward.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Any opposed? Same carries. Motion to accept the resignation of Brooke Thistle, teaching assistant at factor, two thousand twenty four. Motion by Tara.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any discussion?
Just, I don't know, did you have any reviews that helped with those, uh, for teaching positions, teaching assistant positions? I'm gonna say for teaching assistant positions, there's nothing specific.
For both.
For both, but I, for, if we end up with two candidates, but we have interviews. Um, I will say that the preschool, um, position is a mandatory position in the backside, when you have a preschool, and now we have a, um, a sort of, a university, okay, it is a mandatory thing, and that's possible, so.
Okay, so any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same carries. Um, do you have any committee reports?
That's what I should talk about. Um, so the policy committee has been out a couple of times, but one of the things that we are in the process of is looking at our policy manual. Um, it's kind of had a lag. I think this is a good time, though, as we roll into the future with, um, new administration on the kind of horizon for the policy manuals to be looked at. Um, every one who creates their policies, they, um, have done the, the start of it, and what they do, they then ship it back to the school, and they break it out to all the different groups within the school, be it C S E, guidance, transportation, I could keep going on, that you break the policies out, and you do ask those people to review them, so we are in that process, and then the policy committee will get their responses on those policies. Um, the basic line, what every one does, is lays, the way they write the policy is, this is the law that you have to follow. We probably do other things than just the law, but the policy really needs to be the law of what happened. So, that's the policy committee. The other thing we're talking about.
Want to do a question, is there any conversation about points in the last five?
This one will be, yeah.
So we've said, uh, that the board has received their portion, how you usually view.
The board, the, oh, did we send the help bring? Oh, look at that.
Before they, yeah, before they, yeah.
Okay, you guys. Um, anything else on policies?
Yeah.
Finance, um, I'll be honest with you, I canceled tonight, and I did not let anyone know that, so I apologize. Um, but there's really not a lot to do right now, because there's some, you know, reasons to be waiting for the governor, and as the Raphael, um, report has come out, um, it, it really is important to find out what is her reaction going to be with that. Um, I think I told the board that when we talked with the main, um, author of the report, he did say he was going to recommend that if there are changes that they are going to come slowly, and that is in the report, you know, they do recommend that there are changes that should come, um, but it should be judged slowly. We, we still have no idea that the governor's gonna take it, because that is still a recommendation. Even though she asked for the report, it's strictly a recommendation. So I would say the middle of January, you should be getting first thoughts, well, and it was a good, I mean.
All right, well, maybe, um, let's move on to updates.
I'll update, I'll give that to the governor, I'll just give it to him.
Have you had an update on, yeah. We just rolled out, um, we, we, uh, maybe the parents' square, we started beginning this year, and just, and the last, we rolled out student square, which is very similar to parents' square, but for the students, we decided to start with grades five through twelve, so, um, thanks to Sarah, thank you, it's going into those classrooms to explain this, uh, how they can get into student square, why they shared, what, what the benefits are, um, and students have already started to, to be a part of that. So, if, you know, you're a coach for a sports team, you'll be able to come out and, you know, and assist your pass, or to take on your team, or in a advisor for a group, or even a classroom teacher, which really says the parents' square, this is, it's, it's exciting, and, um.
I do like, I want to go on now, in tonight's faculty meeting, it was mentioned that for fifth and sixth grade, um, information is being sent home to parents, so that parents can make that decision also, um, so it's not just a student's decision, we are allowing the sons to participate, to, to go off the campus.
That's, that's, with parents' square, we have those, parents, yeah, um, wasn't that the, she goes, oh, ninety percent, oh, yeah, not a hundred, but. So what are, you, you are, how are we? Well, those are, those are people that just don't use that level of, of, of place, if you were there, so. Well, when you're closing school.
They still have the TV, um.
Radio, TV, or the mouse, um, maybe their spouse has it.
And, and also, um, the announcement, if you have a landline, also goes across the landline, but even if you're not signed up for parent's square, that, because it goes to this here.
Yeah, I think, I think real quick, and, and I don't know, you know, I don't know if it's possible to get to a hundred, you know, I mean, if, if they just don't use that type of thing, they just don't use it, so.
And we did find some limitations, like, after the first delay that went out early, um, we had some grandparents say, okay, I don't really need to know that. Um, unfortunately, we can't take, we, we either had to take all of those types of connections off or leave them, so we have chosen at this point to take them off, because they're good calls, um, because you get the, I remember phone call thing, so.
But I guess overall, parents, and, and I say students, are, are loving them, so, so.
Continue.
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
And coaches.
Yeah, yeah, possible, I agree.
So you got the student one, too.
Yeah, you know, student one, we rolled it out on what was it, Thursday? So it's, it's that new, um, but I, I can't imagine, I know students were asking for it because they were having to find out about so few of their parents, and, you know, that might now, it's, you know, not that, is it? So they, those that want to know, they want to know right away, so.
And I, and I want to point out that, if, if you guys remember, this is really an initiation by the board, you guys asked for this a couple of years, but when they're here, it's really something that you guys said, hey, we need something like this, so, let's see, let's see.
Yeah, I, I, of course, for those, you know, who can actually, we, I, whether, yeah, I, I love, I deal with it, yeah, it's super easy, you can send it on, yeah, and, and, you know, still managing this Facebook as an issue, you know, um, and there are plenty of people, because you remember, if you're not a parent, then you don't have parents' square, so there are still plenty of people that I should go follow on Facebook, and get certain information off of there, so I still think that's another important platform to have, yeah, but I think we're in a pretty good place with it. Uh, I also just wanted to mention, you think Eric, he forgot, um, that, that he had made these, these nice little microphone stands for you guys, um, he, he did that with his new, new credit, and has it in the library now, and he's thrilled to talk. We're thrilled to hear this, and, um, and, yeah, she said, oh, my goodness, I forgot to mention that, we can bring it up, so, thank you, Eric. Yeah, thank you. That's all updates? Any other business? Okay. Um, visitor comments. Um, upcoming dates, December nineteenth, we have pop singers and jazz band concert, December twenty third, holiday recess begins, January sixth, classes resume, January thirteenth is our next board of education meeting, and January sixteenth, we will have the public vote, vote for our building project. Uh, we're really much of that. Yeah. To, yeah.
You get, oh, like, yeah.
Yeah. But that's not a, it is a public meeting. Okay, yes.
Um, I just want to also, I forgot this, but, um, the holiday doors are up, and, um, if you get an opportunity to walk through the school, I know Thursday, prior to the concert, they're going to have some tours and allow people up on the floor, um, and you can grab a ballot, and you can choose the safer door, um, a lot of really huge doors out there, and, and again, I want to point out that you, you guys came up with the idea of having this person, um, as the.
School skirt.
School skirt coordinator, and it's another example of that was really bringing that out, is.
Had a lot of people laugh, uh, flying through the window again, it's still a nice laugh.
I know, I, I, I think, I think it's trying to be a little bit of everything.
Yeah, that's what I told, she offered new stuff.
Couple, you know, might come back again, but, there's a lot of other new stuff that people might not realize that.
Right, I told, it's other new stuff to my land, so.
Are we still allowing the walking going on at school? Absolutely, yeah, the walking is available every, um, day after school from three to seven, and we had a very good turnout on that side, side street down there, from, uh, happened to be waiting, uh, early, regular, and, um, yep, that's the word he's out. I just wanted to tell you, you know, I got there a little early, and I walked around and was down, and I was just, so, and, um, the door down there, but aside from the doors, I was loving everything I seen in the hall, the stuff that the kitchen is putting out, um, the words for the students, not just artwork, but like, very cool, um, things in the hall, which I, it looks really, you know.
I love what folks like to say. I was just impressed that, you know, it's been, you know, let down, anything like that.
I saw it there, it's fine, yeah.
It is, I mean, that's, that's great to see that, you know, if you're, anything to do it, not get far, so, it seems very careful, that's, that's, that's great to know, you know, it shows a lot, I think.
Um, motion to adjourn, adjourn to an executive session for personal hiring.
Motion.
Uh, motion by Tom. Second by Ellen, Tom. Um, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same carries. Okay. So, yeah, we're gonna be, it's, I'm hoping, what are we doing with this? Uh, it won't take long. I, I don't think we're having much, so.